Two in my yard, so it could be it. The doctor assured me I wasn't contagious today, so. Yeah, we've had a couple of high pollution advisories. Dust last week, it was a lot of dust.
You would know that, wouldn't you?
Yes. I get the department report and...
Every hour.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the governing board's study session. Let the record show, all board members are present. The time is six o'clock, so we'll start on time. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move we adopt the agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Hearing none, motion passes five oh. My disclaimer, just right off the top before we get started, I have allergies. I've been to the doctor. He assures me I'm not contagious with anything. I can't give you the plague. But I will be coughing probably quite a lot. I'll try to keep it to a minimum, or at least not coughing to the mic. So, rest assured, I'm not contagious that I know of. All right, so our study session tonight in two part A is reviewing the Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. I know we had several parents who sat through a marathon meeting a week ago. And I would like to start off the meeting by calling them to come up and share what they had intended to share last week before the meeting went on until close to midnight. So I'd like to just honor your time by asking you to step up first to the microphone.
And a granola bar.
My goal is to end on time tonight.
That mean, I don't know what time...
This is scheduled from six to seven.
Fantastic, okay.
Hello?
Okay. Okay, so...
Okay, so if you could introduce yourself, please?
I'm Stacy Fox. Formerly had my younger daughter at Anthem Elementary School. She's now at Caris Academy. My older daughter is at Boulder Creek High School. So, my best to not get emotional, but the last few weeks I've had, it's probably impossible, so.
We've had emotional board meetings, it's all good.
Very good. I just want to bring a bit of humanness to why we're here, right? And we're here to look at a book. And this book affects people greatly. Young man's name was Aiden. This young man was just turned fifteen. This young man was my daughter's friend. This young man took his own life three weeks ago. Like you guys to look at him and know that it's kids like this why we're here. This is Aiden's family, whose home I have been at many times in the last three weeks, including this afternoon just two hours ago. A good day for his mom while their house is being repainted and re-carpeted after the tragedy that happened in their home. Yesterday was not a good day for her. Self and my daughter have gone through waves the last three weeks. When I was here at your marathon meeting, I was not having a good day. I did not have a lot of energy also to give to anything, so. I just want you guys to remember that is why what we put in these books is very important. That is why I'm here to make sure that we are really thinking about how this stuff affects real kids. Thank you. Boulder Creek has lost, I believe it's three kids this year to suicide. Multiple attempts and from kids that I've known since they were three. My daughter. And it's all because of what happens at school. These are families that are good families, healthy families. These kids are under so much stress and unhappiness at school. This is what is going on. And I am looking to find better deterrence for the behaviors that go on at school. Talked about that. That's kind of my thing is to deter, find something that is going to deter these kids from continuing to be awful to their peers where it's pushing them to this point. Because when you talk to these kids, that's the only thing that is affecting them so deeply is the way they are treated at school. And the fact that it's not being taken care of because I feel there is such an array of what the administration can do to discipline going from, you look at each infraction in the guidelines, and there's a huge array for every single thing, going from conference to expulsion, you know? And they can give a conference every single time that student comes in. It can be the same student having the same behavior, and they can opt to give a conference. Now, I don't know about you as parents, whoever are parents, but how does that work for your child? If every time they do something, they get a little talking to. And then the next time, they just get a little talking to. Is that going to deter them from doing it again? Or is it they get a conference one time and you do this again, now this is what's going to happen? An elevated consequence. I know that generally is what deters kids, is knowing, number one, knowing what will happen next time. Everybody needs a little grace, their kids, they're messing up, they're figuring it out, we all know that, right? But they have to know that these behaviors aren't okay. And I'm not just talking about bullying and whatever, talking about all the guidelines, all of them. There is no tiered structure in there. There's no clear structure. And kids need clear boundaries. And we're not giving that. We're just not giving that. Obviously, what we're doing now is not working, not working. Our kids are struggling deeply. And the struggle has a huge impact. A family doesn't have their child. I possibly could not have had mine because my daughter was made fun of. My daughter was put on Snapchat first month of high school. It wrecked her. She's failing all her classes, wrecked her. I'm counseling with her this morning. So, these kids need clear boundaries on what's appropriate and what's not. And our job as the adults is to give them that, right? It's not, there's no clear, I mean, no student, if you ask them, oh, okay, you did this. What's going to happen if you do it again? I guarantee you, they're going to say, I don't know, nothing. That's what all the students say that I talk to, nothing, nothing.
Well, first of all, I would like to express my deepest condolences for the losses in your community with students that you've obviously seen grow from preschoolers on to high school. And I'm a parent, I can't even imagine what that kind of loss would be like. What I'm hearing from you, and I just want to summarize what I heard, so if there's something I missed, you can add it back in, is that you feel that the deterrence for behaviors that we have currently in our guidelines are not working to deter the behaviors. And it sounds like you mentioned quite a bit about bullying behaviors.
You know, I, to me, bullying is a really loose, overused term.
It is.
It really is. There's a clear definition of bullying. I think it's more harassment.
Okay.
You know, I think there's a bigger problem. People just kind of glob onto that term bully. I tend to define what I see more as harassment. Because I know for my daughter, it's different people all the time.
Sure.
And it's people she doesn't know, you know?
Sure.
That are just being judgmental or whatever the case. She can't report them because she doesn't know who they are.
Right.
But those that she has reported, it's conference. That's it.
So then you also feel that there needs to be a clearer structure and more of a structured tiering
I do.
For the guidelines that are in our rights and responsibilities handbook.
Instead of such a big array, I think it would be helpful for administration to know what to do. And I think then students would be clear on what the consequences are to their actions. Because they don't have that. They don't have that anywhere right now.
They need stronger boundaries.
Absolutely.
If you cross this line, yeah, okay.
This is it.
Is that...
And then follow through, of course. And I had also mentioned to Ann that I think I would love, love to see implemented in our guidelines is community service as part of the discipline. I think that that's another part of a student's learning, is that when you take away from your community, you now have to give back to your community. And that's, I mean, their school community, right? Their peers, their school, that's their, that's their community, you know? And I think honestly, if a student gets a conference, they also need to do community service. I don't think a conference, just a conference alone is ever sufficient for a student, including mine. If my kid does something, go scrape up gum for whatever, you know? If you're doing something, if you know the rules and you're not doing something, if you're not living within that in your community, you know, if you mess up, which they're going to mess up, we all messed up, they're going to mess up. But that's how you learn. That's how you learn to not do those things again, is by having something. And just a conversation, I don't think is going, I don't think that works. A conversation plus now you have to do something to correct what you did.
So have I summarized fairly accurately what your thoughts are?
Or the tiered structure, yeah, as far as that goes.
Sure.
And the only reason I'm asking for clarification is one of the things that Dr. Finch suggested to the board is that it would be our role to express a disciplined philosophy that would be behind students' rights and responsibility. And so just in terms of discipline philosophies, and I know this might be more technical than what you were trying to say, but I heard you say two different things.
Okay.
So one, you were saying, you were talking about discipline as a deterrent. That's actually a little bit of a different philosophy than discipline to teach. And you were saying to teach them. So, and the only reason I ask is because sometimes like when you use discipline as a deterrent, you're just trying to find a consequence that is so severe, nobody would want to do that act. I mean, from a philosophical standpoint. And so I guess I'm just asking for the distinction. Are you really saying deterrent, or do you mean teaching?
Both. That's how I parent. I teach and I deter my kids from having those same behaviors. I mean, that's teaching, honestly. That is how you teach. If you're... There has to be a consequence for the action, and then there is also teaching within that as well.
I think I agree. I agree with what Ms. Tweedy's trying to say. And it is kind of hard to figure out how to say it. There is, there are teaching moments. We teach our kids in teaching moments.
And I think every time a kid messes up, that is a teaching moment.
Absolutely. I mean, everything we do is a teaching moment. There's a consequence to a reaction.
Right.
But there's also degrees that require a severe penalty. I'm going, you know, seventy-five down I-17 in the fifty-five area. Yeah, I might get stopped and I might get a ticket. I'm going one-twenty in the same area, I'm going to jail. They're going to take me.
But you know that because there's a clear definition and it's listed. If you go this speed, you get this. If you go this speed, you get that.
And actually, see, here's where we run into the problem. It's not always. I was going one-ten down I-40 and an officer stopped me. And I said, oh my God, I was really going that fast. I said, are you sure? Could you check that? I said, there was nobody around, I was just driving. I said, I'm just trying to go to my mom's. He said, you know what, it was obviously a clear mistake. And he didn't give me a ticket at all.
Manipulated the system, which is also what kids have learned to do too.
Well, no, it really...
And that's why they continue their behaviors because they have learned to manipulate the administration. I've seen it.
But this isn't manipulation. It isn't manipulation. It was just, it was really what was happening. Because I always go in the middle of the night, there was no one on the road. And part of the problem, this is why, this is why I'm kind of going where I'm going. When I look at our guidelines, we have a minimum and a maximum. And it used to be that the minimum was almost always suspension. Throw them out, throw them out, suspension. Which is why we changed it to bring in the conferences, a lot of them.
Right.
If, and then we give discretion to our administrators. If we remove that discretion from our administrators completely, they couldn't look at situational moments, I guess is what I'm trying to say. If you're in that moment of loss, or in a moment of tragedy, or think about it from a teenage perspective, either your parent, maybe your parent's an alcoholic.
Right.
Maybe your parent is absent, maybe your parent is demanding that you will be the next top doctor. Whatever it is, our kids face pressure. They get to school, they're on edge, they're falling apart, they snap at someone. Our administrator steps in and they kind of know what's going on, so they tether it. How is it that you would want us to structure? Because in that case, we're not going to throw the book at someone because they snapped at someone.
Right, and I totally understand that. And I understand the different situations, I really do. And that's why I wanted to have a table talk, because, you know, I want to find a solution that's going to fit. Because again, what we have now is not working. So if there's another idea that is similar in that, we also have to remember that, okay, I understand that the person who is being awful to the other child may be going through something that still doesn't give them the right to be that way to a child that is now going to go through something because of them. That's not okay either. So they do have to have a consequence. It can't always be let's pamper the one who's being mean because they're going through something. You know, I get it, I get that they have stuff going on. I really do. Because honestly, the boy who took his own life, he had moments of not being kind to my daughter, his friend, as well. Because he was going through internally whatever he was going through, you know? So I get it. I do get that every kid has their own things, but you don't get to put that on somebody else. And that's what they need to learn. That is a boundary that has to be created in the school system. And there does have to be a consequence, whether mom and dad are getting a divorce, or whether there is this or that. They also, and that's where the teaching and the conversation say, hey, listen, Johnny, you know, I understand you're having a hard time. I understand you're going through all these things. And talk to that child and say, however, we do have to give you this discipline because you have done this three times before.
An example I spoke with Dr. Finch about maybe less extreme. I agree with you in that I would think the point of discipline, at least with juveniles, is teaching. You want them to learn better. And I did, was mentioning, I think, one thing lacking is if that truly is your philosophy, you study to see if a consequence is reducing the occurrence of the behavior, and then you would know it was working. And the example I gave, we have to teach children responsibility in going to class on time. We have sweep at some campuses. Now, if we truly believed sweep taught kids to be to school, to class on time, we'd first of all offer it on every campus because it was an effective way to teach responsibility, but we don't. And we would look for data that the students got more responsible when they were swept.
Right.
I know kids that have twenty, thirty, forty sweeps, they don't care.
Right.
It's great, they got swept with their friends. So it's not working, and so I don't even know why we have it as a consequence. You take those same students, and they had to make up the hour after school, they'd probably be on time a lot more.
Right.
And if that didn't work. But by the same token, we could also deter somebody from being tardy by long-term suspending them, which would be outrageous. And so that's what I'm trying to say to you, is I don't think it's necessarily a deterrent as much as a teaching tool. But if we don't have evidence that it's teaching...
I mean, that's, you know, that's...
It is, but it's not because...
I feel like that's the same thing.
They're truly discipline philosophies, and so when you read discipline philosophies, and I were going to say one, if I said it was a deterrent, that is a completely different discipline.
Well, maybe within official guidelines, sure. But in the real world, outside of a textbook, it's the same thing.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure that's what you're saying. Because I agree with you. We should have some evidence that it's teaching.
When I told my fourteen-year-old that I was bringing to the table the idea of community service within their campus, she hated the idea. She said, oh my God, that'll deter kids from acting like that. Nobody wants to do that. Nobody wants to walk around our school and do stuff like, you know? So I feel like that is teaching and that is a deterrent as well. Because it is teaching them that when you take from your community, you now have to give back.
Okay, I agree.
Mrs. O'Brien, did you have a comment? And then I want to make sure we give all the parents...
Actually, my comment was is that we have four other... I appreciate very much what Mrs. Fox has to say, thank you. But if we could maybe let the other four parents talk and then ask questions afterwards to make sure we get heard by everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, so do you guys have a sort of agreed upon, you're passing the mic, okay, so?
I don't mind talking. I brought my kids tonight, they didn't know I was going to talk directly about them. But so I hear a lot about the people that are...
Will you say your, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, say your name. I just, thank you.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. Shom. So, my son was bullied when he was young in fifth grade, and he was little and tiny. And the nurse pulled it out to me and said, hey, I think there's something going on with your son. He came in here with scratches and stuff all over his body. And so we went to the principal, he gave the names, he was forced to give the names. He didn't want to give up his bully's names because then he had to face the bullies. And that's not fun for a victim. Well, he's a junior now with those same kids in the same class, and they still dump trash in his backpack at lunch. And he won't name them today. Because now they're just harassing him, but he's bigger than them and he could fight back. But the school has taught him he shouldn't fight back and he should just be a victim. I'm not sure how to handle that, but that should be changed because that's been going on for years. He's going to graduate with the same people. He's kind of learned how to just try to ignore them as much as possible, but lunch is still dumped in his backpack. My daughter has a girl in her school, she's been in four fights this year. Last year, the second day, it's her last day of school, this kid, the same girl, attacked a teacher, attacked two students in the classroom, flipped tables, they had to evacuate the classroom. The same girl is starting fights, the day she gets back from a suspension or whatever, she starts a fight that same day. I just want to know, how many chances do you give violent students? I don't want my daughter to be the next one attacked. She's not worried too much, I don't think. She tries to stay away from her, but they're in the same classroom. She tries to stay away from her. I just, there's got to be something done about the victims. I mean, they're scared to come out.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, I want to pass the microphone down to the next... No, we have to have it for the recording. And please state your name.
My name's Tim Warner. I have two children, I attend Barry Goldwater. And I think part of the students' rights is not to be bullied or harassed. I have two daughters that go there, both of them have quit cheer. We've gone through all kinds of trouble with admin. We've been lied to by admin. And my daughters don't deserve that. They've come home crying. The bullying needs to stop from everybody. There needs to be consequences from everybody, not just student to student, admin to student, teachers to student, student to student. And the discipline needs to be progressive. I agree with Ms. Tweedy. Yes, you learn, but you learn by discipline. The levels of discipline, yes, need to be gradual. I'm not going to go to work and say, I destroy something at work, immediate termination. Have progressive discipline. It needs to be the same for kids. When I was in school, I was bullied. I was bullied until I couldn't take it no more. I came back the size I am now, and the bullying stopped because I was done taking it. But our progressive discipline was you got after-school detention. If that didn't work, you got in-house suspension. If that didn't work, you got Saturday work scheduled where you went and put in eight hours cleaning up the school, and then you went to a five-day off-campus. And from there, you were expelled. But we have the schools, because they just converted one over by my house, for children that have been removed from other schools for whatever reason. That's where these children need to go, not back in the schools where the kids are trying to learn. I think the progressive discipline needs to really get into play.
Okay.
As a case-by-case basis, there are exceptions, but it needs to stop.
Okay, thank you very much. If you would pass it to the next parent?
I'm Sheri Warner.
Okay.
I'm his wife. My daughter's here with us, one of them that he was referring to. In seventh grade, she was bullied at Deer Valley Middle School. She stood up for herself, the girl cold-cocked her. My daughter reported it to the office. The office suspended her for five days for fighting. She became a victim three times in that one incident, one by the student, one by the principal who sat there and told her over and over, you swung at the girl. It was on video. We watched that video ten times. I said, show me where she swung. She could never show me, but she said, you're suspended for fighting. My daughter was devastated because my kids are AB students, have been since kindergarten. They're the most loving, caring children you will ever meet. And then she was bullied by the principal, after bullied by that student. She's told to go see the counselor the day that she gets back to school to talk about how to handle the situation if the situation occurs again. The counselor said, so tell me what happened. She told her what happened, and the counselor looked my daughter, my seventh-grade daughter, in the face and said, you weren't bullied. A bully will not stand up for themselves. A bully is going to cower in the corner or commit suicide. And that is what really gets me, just like her friend. They have to get to suicide before anybody takes it serious. And at that point in time, it is way too late. So now my children have to deal with admin. And then we get this circle, well, you have to stay within the school, you have to go certain routes. You can't go to district. When you do go to district, it gets put back to the school, and absolutely nothing gets done, except your child gets victimized over and over and over and over again. My daughter, both of them have quit cheer because they've been bullied and humiliated and retaliated against by the cheer coaches because we stood up for them. Okay, now the principal is kind of doing the same thing. It's just a vicious circle. We've met with Dr. McNeil. It's been a vicious circle. And my children are still feeling victimized. Why? Because the cheer coach is still the cheer coach. Neither one of my children, and actually, last year at Barry Goldwater, they lost more than half their cheerleaders because of the coaching staff. They had thirteen kids try out this year. Back when I was in school, you had three hundred children trying out for cheer. I was in school, like he said, some of your discipline was if you got out of line, if you did something wrong, and we didn't have the extreme that things are today because now we have social media, which is even worse. And I know people say, well, that happened on social media, so that has nothing to do with the school. Well, but it does because these are still the kids that are going to school together. So I know it happens off-campus, but it's still the students of the same school that are being, having to deal with them and face them day to day. Social media bullying has to stop. Social media bullying has to stop, or there has to be consequences for the social media bullying. Because that's where it even works, because then it hits hundreds of people at one time. Posted on. But, I mean, it's, this is things kids got to learn to deal with, you know, and it's hard to deal with. And then when the, when the people that they're supposed to feel safe with by going to like the adult staff, the admin, the, they don't. They come home and they cry to us, and then we just get kicked in the face constantly.
It's like they haven't-
They don't. A victim becomes a victim over and over, and the person that's protected is the ones that are doing the bullying. And that's wrong. Because then, they're more destroyed. And then they end up going to suicide because they feel there's no other way out. And it's not right, we've got to protect these kids. You know, we all grew up, looks like everybody here probably grew up in the seventies and eighties, we all had discipline. I mean, at least most of us, you know, you knew that, back then, you got spanked, you know?
I got the wooden paddleboard once.
My dad grabbed his belt and I went, "I'm gone," and you just hear it come through the belt loop.
My kids still get so filthy.
There's-
You're getting soap in your mouth.
Some of the old-school discipline, I mean, I had trash pickup. I got in trouble at school. I had to go out there before school and pick up trash, you know? The suspensions, there has to be a progression and then there has to be a cutoff point that, okay, this child acts out, and I know my kids have experienced many kids that are, you know, the troubled kids throwing desks and stuff. Nothing is done. That's just how that child is. Well, but that's not acceptable, because that's putting not only the other students, but even the staff in jeopardy. Because that's where, you know, that's when they come in shooting up the schools, because they, these kids do have issues and they need help.
So, what I'm hearing from you, and correct me if I have this wrong, is that you have concerns about the consequences for students who engage in harassment and bullying, whether through social media or on campus, and some of it, pictures taken on campus then get posted off-campus and, and social media is definitely a challenge. But it also sounds like you have some concerns with the steps parents have to go through to bring their issues to administration, that, that there's a process problem, that you feel that parents' concerns are not, are not being addressed.
No, I don't think they are. I think they're taken very minimal.
So, I just want to differentiate, because one, one of your concerns has to do with the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, and I'm not saying this is a separate issue, but, but the process by which parents can have their complaints addressed is also, did not work for you.
No, it didn't. And I think that needs to be in the student handbook as well, that when, when they are, when a student is being bullied, these are the processes that should be taken, and they should be taken seriously.
Sure.
Not just put off.
It's part of the right.
No, I'm not arguing with you, I just-
I've sat down and wrote an email to the whole board. Everybody from the board got back to her. "We're going to send this to Dr. Finch." To this day, I have not heard from Dr. Finch. After you sat down with me at the gym, this was about three weeks ago, she sent an email, four weeks ago, she sent an email, "The whole board and you-"
It was two weeks after we sat down at the gym.
It was, it was told to us that it was going to be handed over to you.
That was about two weeks after we met with you at the gym.
Okay, so, this, this sounds like a, a separate issue that we need to address a little bit separately from this, this study session. And we do have one more parent who wishes to speak, so if you would give your name and, and share your thoughts.
Stephanie Collins. I want to come at the table today with a little bit of common sense. Right now, in our schools, there is absolutely zero communication from your administrations to parents. The community is not a community. And I am not sitting here today as one parent telling you this. About two months ago, I had, not by any choice, really of my own, kind of transitioned into this community advocate role for parents who are going through processes that they have been victimized by either the system or that their children have been victimized while that school in the system, okay? Currently, right now, I'm speaking for almost seven hundred parents that represent thirty-six of the thirty-eight schools. So, as far as polling is concerned and issues that parents are experiencing, it's not isolated. So, sitting here and telling you that there's a huge gap in what your administrations and how they, they actually converse with parents is really the foundation to this entire problem. Because if communication, I mean, we learn communication in kindergarten. You communicate your feelings, you communicate your issues, you communicate what it is there's issues with, so you can provide solutions. As a parent, we are not able to even offer solutions because at, at the, at the school level, there's none that are, it's not, it's not an open door. And that's what I want for at least you guys to honestly consider right now, there, there's a division, and we are so divided in community, it's not community. Your teachers are terrified of your administrations because they can't speak up. The off-the-record communications I've had with some of your teachers are just, as a parent, you just don't think those things happen in the school, but they can't even speak to the administrations because the administration silences them. As a parent, when you go to an administrator of a school and there is an issue that directly involves your child and you are told that there's a process to go through, there's a form you need to fill out, what happened to communication? I'm in front of you, or I'm on the phone, I don't want to fill out a form. I want to know that this is being handled and I want to know that it's going to be taken care of. Another piece I wanted to, to ask about, oh, and actually, and in regards to that, I haven't had a chance to actually meet Ms. Frankenperson yet, but we had corresponded in regards to parental notification back on March thirteenth, okay? She had, and I brought copies in case, and you guys wanted those, we had gone back and forth because in the current handbook, there is not even a process, there's not even a blurb that says, "It is a part of your administration's responsibility to contact a parent if anything happens to their child." I'm talking broken bones, I'm talking someone busts a nose, I mean, this is common sense stuff. It's not happening on those things, it's not happening on the big things either. So, in a timely manner, okay, we need to, we need to figure out what that definition of timely is. Because to me, timely is same day. It's not, it's not a matter of within five minutes, but it's a matter of, if my kid comes home and my kid tells me before the school tells me something happened, that's a problem. And that is what's happening. I've had parents who have told me they've been notified from their schools two weeks later that their children have expressed suicidal thoughts to counselors. Two weeks! Okay? There's also been things, and obviously, social media is a whole nother caveat that adds to this problem, and maybe that's not something that can be put on the table right now, or, or how you navigate laws and all of those things that go around that, but when information is made available and your schools know about it and they don't communicate to the parents, that's a problem. How, how can you sit with, and, and, and as a district, and I'm thinking, I'm not coming just as a parent, I'm coming to you on a liability portion. Close the gap of liability. I'm sure the last thing any district wants is a lawsuit, right? If you have information about something, your principals are not sharing that, that is a problem. Because it's not in the teachers' hands at that point. Our teachers can't do anything about it. And that's a misconception that a lot of parents have to understand. That's a big piece of what we're advocating for, that it's not our teachers. Half the time, our teachers are trying to advocate, they can only do so much. It comes from the people you are putting in place to oversee our schools and our kids. One of the other things that is currently in the handbook is the assessment of what a threat is and what it's not. Okay? Suspected violations of law will be reported to local law enforcement. Yet, we have weapons on our campuses, we have death threats made between students, those things aren't reported to law enforcement? I don't understand that. If it's a legal aspect, maybe that's something we need to look at seriously and consider. Because I guarantee, if you had a weapon at a gas station and you pointed it at somebody or you said, "Hey, I'm going to kill you later," you wouldn't be walking home with your milk that night. Why is that allowed in our schools? What, what constitute a death, a, a, a threat assessment? Because according to this, all suspected violations of law will be reported to law What's being reported? That's part of the problem. If the buck stops at the school, then the school needs to handle it. Allow the parents to get involved. And quite honestly, those kinds of things need to be put on the parent's lap to deal with. Take it off the school's responsibility, it shouldn't be there in the first place. If you start having, making parents accountable to parent their kids, that is part of this problem too. But if you don't allow us that opportunity to get involved, we're sitting here tonight, aren't we?
I asked our school, a boy that was causing some troubles at the school, to my daughter and many others, I sent you the email as well because they were not responding back. They did respond to the first part and then things continued and then they were not responding, so, first, they said, "Would your daughter like to switch classes?" So that she wasn't in class with him anymore. I said, "Why should my daughter have to switch classes? That's absurd. That is absurd." But, I'm sorry, I love-
No, and that is, that is actually one of the points that I was going to bring up, that when there are situations that occur where students legitimately need to be separated, why is the victim the one that has to move? Because according to your principals, that's policy. I've never, I have, I have read this handbook, I could probably tell you the sixty pages of what is in there, this past three months, there is nothing that is a policy that a victim has to move. And that's part of a mentality that's breeding the culture of this kind of behavior in the schools, because the offenders, in any regard, can do what they want because it's the victim that has to figure out the other end of that.
That's what I was going to say, is I had, I didn't have the parents' information to contact the parents directly with this one particular boy, or I would have, which is why I contacted the school. And I asked the school, "Can we sit down in a conference with his parents?" So, get the parents together, not the kids, get the parents together, so us as parents, and the school would need to facilitate it, it's happening at the school, and can the parents sit down together so I can say, "Hey, this is what your child is doing to my child." And they said, "We don't do that."
Right, to have their parents-
Because I didn't want to go knocking on their door, I don't know what I'm facing if I know.
I actually would like to answer that, because I, I, I do understand where you're coming from. I too had a daughter who was bullied from baby all the way on through junior high. My husband and I finally took to saying, "You stand up for yourself, I don't care. You get suspended, we'll take you out for a treat."
Not all kids can do that.
I understand that.
They don't, not every kid has that.
I do, I do understand that. And, and she got to her eighth-grade year and she did finally fight back. And it resulted in her losing her promotion, it resulted in a suicide attempt, so I understand exactly what you're talking about. But the problem is, by law, we cannot tell you who the other parent is. Because if you think I wouldn't have been on that other parent's doorstep and knocked on it and said, "We need to deal with this now and here," I would have. I wouldn't have been violent towards them, I wouldn't have threatened them. But the law protects that information. There's FERPA rules that we have to follow, which means we can't tell you, "This is the kid, here's their parent, here's their address, here's their phone number."
I know where they live, the phone number was the only piece, I know, the phone number's the only piece I didn't have, and so I couldn't call them.
And I understand that.
So, I'm like, can you, can we meet in your office? I don't want to knock on their door.
And I want to realize, it's not because they don't want to.
And they said, "Well, you can go and bring the police." I don't want to involve the police and bring them, I'm like, I just want to talk to these parents, because I get he's a kid and, you know, his parents need to be talked to so that they know he owns a gun and he's mentally unstable, and he's making all kinds of threats at school.
Well, and then, I would say at that point, you, you talk to the administration, say this needs to be reported to police.
Yeah, and, and they, and they did. But then he continued to threaten my daughter and say, "If you and your mom don't stay out of my business, if you guys don't, if you guys don't."
So, I'm just, if you don't mind, I'm going to interject here. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for coming to, to speak to us at the study session, but I would also like to give administration an opportunity to respond to some of the concerns that you've expressed.
Well, and, and I'd, I'd like for us to take it to this, how can we implement things in here? Because this is supposed to be for the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, and what can we do?
Make it more functional.
Can we start with just open communication? I mean, can we start with this, with this communication that says parental contact is number one on the list? Because I guarantee you, if, if we can bridge that gap between parent and schools, you're going to have less of us here, you're going to have more congruency between the communities because there is communication.
Right, and so I'd like to give our administration an opportunity to respond to your concerns. No relation to Jenny Frank.
But I like the title of President Frank, I might use that.
I'll give it to you, you can have it.
When I've talked to them, okay, very good. Now I get some faces.
Yes, exactly. Regarding parent contact, we did talk about putting something in the SRNR, and I believe I did address that, you all have this on page twenty-seven in yellow, it is highlighted, the proposed change. It is just one sentence, but I think it does encompass what, what we had talked about. It says, "The parent of a victim of a physical altercation will be contacted, contacted via phone call when that victim has been identified." Sometimes it doesn't happen the same day. Sometimes, things happen at the end of the school day, the next day is when the investigation will occur. So, when that victim is identified, then the school administrator would be required at that time to reach out to the parent. How does that sound to you?
That's only if they're physically assaulted, that phrase says.
Is there any way that can be more broad, in a sense, to incorporate any, anything that a parent would need to know that, that affects their child though, while on school grounds? I mean, whether it is, whether it is a fight, whether it is something-
Any infraction involving another student. That would be, that would be a better phrasing, any infraction involving another student-
Stephanie, are you getting to the point that we talked about, you know, in the conversation, I basically, when we first met, brought up that it's kind of an unwritten practice that principals have a twenty-four-hour response time. Are you saying that you would like that memorialized so that it is clear with expectations from administration in communicating on any incident?
I think it needs to be clear, yes, absolutely.
Okay, I, I, I would agree, because then, then you have hard accountability. However, there are always incidences where it doesn't get to that, but I think a standard communication about what the expectation is, getting back to parents in a, in a timely manner with accurate information, instead of, "Hey, I'm calling to give you information that something happened, but I don't have anything," I don't think that that would be a good communication. But I think that we can perhaps get to something like that.
Okay, can you go, can I say?
Yeah, I was just going to say that you may not have all of the information, but what they're saying is that if Johnny or Sally comes home, I'm on the bus, it takes me till four o'clock, I get out at two-thirty, so you've got this whole hour and a half, and it happened at lunchtime. If they come home and tell me either my heart's broken or my eyeball got knocked out, or whatever it is, then I would like to know that you're telling me what happened prior to that. And we get that people get busy and that you do have to do formal investigations, but I don't think they're asking for the end of the investigation, they just want to know that something started. Because, because there may be that kid that doesn't talk to them when they get home and all of this stuff is going on, and, and then you get that phone call maybe the next morning, but meanwhile, back at the ranch, they've kicked the dog, they punched the brother, they haven't done the, the homework, or, or whatever that, that is, and they don't have a clue why. So, I think you're not looking at the whole total, this is all the things that happened, just to let you know that an incident happened.
Well, real quick, right, before they move on to their next thing, the student leaves the room, "Mom, Johnny was in my office just now, blah, blah, blah. Now move on to your next thing on your list." You know? That needs to be the, the final part before they.
Okay, so we do have a student who wishes to speak, so if you'd please, um, come forward. Thank you for being here, and please share your name.
My name is Coral Warner. I am a student at Barry Goldwater. I had a friend last year. She has suicidal thoughts. She told people, nobody told her parents. She ended up in the hospital because she tried to kill herself. Nobody did anything, nobody contacted home. That's not fair to her. She could've died. And I could've lost a friend, but nobody cared to tell anybody. And I've been bullied myself. And I've been told personally, you can't dwell on the past. But I don't think of it every day, but scars are scars no matter what. And I've been bullied not only by students, but by administration. I quit the cheer team, and I want these women to know what they did. I quit the cheer team. It was something I loved. It took what I loved, and they ripped it to pieces and threw it back in my face and said, "Here, how do you like it?" They yelled at us, they disrespected us, they benched me because I didn't show up to volunteer work, because I was helping my grandfather, who needed us. But they didn't understand, and they benched me. They took something that I cared about and just threw it in the trash. I will never cheer again as long as those women are coaches, because I feel so disrespected. And I feel I should not be treated that way, because I never treated them with any disrespect. And nobody wants to do anything about it.
Okay. I'm, I'm very, very sorry that, that you had those experiences.
Can I ask one question about that policy that you all were discussing?
Sure.
Thank you for, for speaking. It says physical altercation, I know we were talking about, um, maybe broadening that definition, but I do wanna make sure that, that would include, um, threats as well on, on that, so I don't know if that.
That's why I, I was suggesting the.
Definition would get broadened.
Infraction involve, any infraction involving another student, because that would be a threat, you're involving, that's another student.
Right, but it, but it als, and it also could involve potentially the reporting of a suicide, because I wouldn't necessarily, is that correct? I, I really am asking for clarification on the understanding of, of what you all were, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, regarding community service, we agree that community ser, that would be a great piece. We've kinda moved towards restorative practices in our district, um, which is, is a great philosophy, uh, and, and we believe that community service does fall under that category. So we did include it, uh, in next year's SRNR, um, in, in the discipline guidelines. That administration does have the option of giving community service to students.
There we are again with the options.
That is on every page, um, that has the discipline guidelines. It's up at the top.
I believe Ms. and Mrs. Ordway had a comment or a question?
Well, it's just a, a clarification. Um, we're mandatory reporters for child abuse. Is there any mandatory, and I know that we should, I'm, I'm asking legal definition, for, um, attempted suicide or I say I'm going to? Is there a legal something where that needs to be reported?
Uh, yes, yes, there is, and we actually have Miko back here in the back, who's fabulous.
Yeah, I did see her, but I didn't wanna put her on.
And she, she runs our crisis team, and she's amazing. So administration, from top to bottom, know the importance of that. Any, any, um, word of any type of life-threatening situation, it is an automatic phone call to supervision, et cetera.
So i- if a student reported to whomever employee, whether it be a teacher, the security, I, whomever they talked to, and said, "Hey, you know, um, they just said this. I, I don't have it in writing, they didn't take a Snapchat shot of it, but this is what they've told me." So from there, what would happen?
Well, it depends, um, if it was a teacher or a bus driver or whatever. If it was a bus driver, perhaps, it would go to their, uh, to their immediate supervisor. If it was somebody on a campus, a teacher or a staff member, um, the school should have a system in place to where they notify either an assistant principal or a principal. After that, then it's to the three of us, and then we immediately reach out to Miko as well.
Okay, so where in that, and I know sometimes it's quick, but where in that process is that I get hold of the parent? Or the guardian, whomever's responsible?
Go ahead. Yep. So we are currently working on, um, updating and revising our policy and process for, um, any type of threat harm to self, because we know that that needs to happen. So currently, I'm working with Denise Dar, who is kind of over all of our counselors, Miko Price, some of our key psychologists, counselors, assistant principals, and principals in our district, to, um, I guess streamline the process for any type of harm to self, specifically suicide ideation, because we know those have been on the rise. And, um, our process will include a checklist that will be very specific for anybody who deals with a student who has made a threat to themselves. Yes.
Yes, absolutely. That is discussion that we are having right now in terms of any time, any adult, any student hears a threat, what is that process? And once we get through that process and update that paperwork, um, which should streamline the process, make it easier for everybody to understand what that looks like, there will be, um, training for all of our administration, including our psychologists and our counselors. And we do that through our, uh, initial threat assessment training at the beginning of every year. So that is something that is in process right now. We've had one meeting, we have another meeting later, uh, next week, so.
And then Jen, one more thing. There's, um, and I, I can email this to you. There's one school district, or at least one that I know of, that on the student, um, ID cards, there's a number, and it's not an eight-hundred number to call, but it's a text number.
Yes.
Um, so it makes it a lot, um, more kid-friendly, if you wanna use those terms.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because that will be starting next year.
Perfect.
So that is something that's already been discussed and agreed upon, and that will be on every student ID.
Right, I know. And I think with, with your, um, checklist, um, making sure that, I mean, I, I think you guys all understand that that's, that's a very, a crisis that is.
Right, absolutely.
Has to swiftly be moved on when a student makes, because this isn't just like, "Oh, I wanna go kill myself." You know, that's not what this is anymore. This is not.
It's not.
Willie-nilly conversation and just little, "Oh, I'm having a bad day, this is real, these kids are doing it," you know?
And the reason we need to have that more specific is because we have different levels of support at different campuses. For instance, a K-six campus may not have a TOA or an assistant principal. It is that administrator and that nurse that acts suddenly on that situation.
Well, and then there just needs to be, like, and I don't know what that hour mark is, whether it's, uh, within the hour or within, it, not a twenty-four hour to notify the parents.
It's immediate, it's absolutely immediate reporting.
Soon as that, that parent needs to be notified, your child has just been reported as to be making a suicide threat to themselves, because that parent needs to know this, that I need to make sure my kid's coming straight home from school, not going over to this place or that place or whatever, and I need to be ready to handle some stuff when I get, when they get home, you know?
And I had a quick question for, um, Ms. Minor. Uh, will the training also be for classroom teachers? Because I know I taught at a K-six where we didn't have a counselor. I taught sixth grade, and, uh, we had some girls who were cutters. And so, um, I would have benefited from some, some training on, on what to do with these types of situations.
It's a good question, President Frank. That will be done in the initial training, that we have a list of required trainings that teachers are required to do at the beginning of the year, and that one will be added, because it's a new process.
Okay.
So administrators will be in charge of making sure that their teachers and classified get that training.
Okay. And, and I believe Julie Frank has, you have something else you wanna share?
Just real quick, lastly, I'd like to talk about minimum and maximum as opposed to first referral, second referral, third referral. I think we talked about that. So a few years ago, when the handbook was rewritten, um, we included administration and teachers and parents in on that, and it, it was decided that, uh, they wanted to have more discretion. They wanted to be able to look at each situation individually and make a determination as to discipline. So that is why we, we went to a minimum and maximum, and there appears to be a big range in there. There does appear to be a big range in there. So, but that is so that administration can use judgment and look at the entire situation.
And I get that, but it's not working. Oh, um, and maybe, I'm not saying that I have the answers by any means. I have an idea, you know? And, you know, your guys is, um, you, you guys have been kind of going around this rodeo more than I have. So, um, if you have an idea that's not what we have now and not what I'm suggesting, awesome. You know, somewhere in between, something that would accommodate both, that would give that structure and those boundaries, but also give some flexibility. But it's not working, what we have now, it's not working.
Ms. Frank, can I just ask you a quick question? When you, when you say the discretion, um, if there is, if there's a child who, let's say, is partaking in bullying, are your administrators looking at that as a one-time occurrence every time, even though there could've been ten other occurrences that child had? Or is all of that information being looked at, whether it's the eighth time this kid has done something, or the first time? I mean, how is that, what does that gap look like?
All of it is being looked at. When we have a student who, uh, is, is being, uh, disciplined or, or look, they look at their entire file, every infraction, and not just in that category. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes, not just in that category.
And, and to that point, principals have a working file, uh, it is the law. I mean, uh, when, gosh, what was that, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, when bullying really kinda hit the schools and there were mandatory expectations from bully box to, uh, forms that needed to be filled out, et cetera. Principals, great principals, um, have a working file. I would hope all principals everywhere have a working file on students where the reports are going through. Principals reach out to Ms. Minor and Julie and I constantly about this. Um, going back to your point, you know, we go back to the tight and the loose. Um, I would agree, some of our practices we need to get tighter on. With our minimums and our maximums, we need to continue to have better conversations about, are we too loose? And where do we need to get tight? With respect to the twenty-four hours, I agree with you. You all hit home runs today. We need to get tighter on certain processes, and that's why I struggle a little bit about putting a twenty-four hour there, because then it, does it give them permission, principals, to not respond until twenty-three hours and thirty minutes? God, I hope not! If something is huge going on, we need to make that call before, you know, I even get back to my office and I need to get on the cell phone. So I would agree, um, we need to work on our tight. We definitely do.
And if you're Skyhawk Strong, I'm gonna assume you're from Deer Valley High School.
CJ Morgan, Deer Valley High School, I'm a math teacher there. Just kinda listened to what you guys are talking about with, um, the rap sheet that you're referring, um, how many bullies, bullying situations they had. So my question is, as a teacher, um, do we have the privilege to see that sheet of like, um, like if, if, let's say just me, I bullied a kid twenty times, and I'm in your class, do we, do we get that? And I'm very new to the, the profession, but I just, just a quick question about that.
That's a great question. I mean, that even, we can go even to CUM files. Teachers have the right to see information on students and, that they're teaching, but do they have the right to see all students' information? I don't know the answer to that. I think that would be a great question for an attorney. I am not an attorney.
Because I know, I know with FERPA and all of that stuff, that, that gets involved and it's a little sippy.
Yeah, right. I can, I can see the pros and I can see the cons. Um, it's a slippery, slippery slope. Um, we can find out and get the information back to you.
Because what I, and just hearing you guys and, um, seeing what I've seen in the four years, I mean, some stuff we don't see, we don't know that Johnny is a bully. Johnny could be the greatest kid in my class, because he, you know, whatever it is, but, and once again, I, I, I've never really thought about it, because I always thought, well, if that kid's not in my class, I mean, we couldn't be violating FERPA or some other sort of law, so.
To, to that point, i- i- I guess as a clarification to what you're talking about, um, thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Excellent. Um, Dr. McNeil, is that, i- if the student is in Mr. Morgan's math class, that makes him his student, and in the high school, and actually as far down as, um, fourth grade in some of our schools, they are changing classes and, and having different teachers for different subjects, I, I guess I'm hoping that you're gonna, we're gonna check to make sure that all those teachers are able to see what's going on and across that whole day and for those students.
Right.
Or that year, you know, depending on what's happening.
The last thing we need in, in the paper is that we're creating hit lists for teachers after kids. However, I know, yeah, I know, that's the, that's the slippery side. The, the good part is that through the elementary schools, as well as the middle and the high schools, our teachers should be coming together, um, to talk about their students through the MTSS, uh, process about tiers of support. And through those conversations, y- you would hope that if somebody is having trouble or they're being a little, uh, a little honorary lately, or they're doing certain things, that teachers are talking to each other about behaviors of kids. Um, that would be our hope.
That's my point, yeah.
Well, and I think it's also, couldn't there be, you know, I mean, everybody pulls kids up on their, their grades, whether it's not, and I don't know if synergy, I'm not sure what, what, what program we're using, but all of our discipline records are collective and electronic. Why couldn't there be a flag or something, so a teacher knows that there's a flag? Let's look at something.
So, like you said, create a hit list or anything like that, and be prejudging kids when they're coming into your class or anything like that, but at least to be aware.
Yeah, I, I, I taught, um, at elementary in the district for ten years, so I think I can, can speak to this. Last three years, or, we were departmentalized, I was at sixth grade, so I knew all of the students, excuse me, in sixth grade. We would meet in collaborative teams, the four or sixth grade teachers frequently. This is what I see going on in my class, are you having the same problem in your class? Uh, when we fill out, um, when lower grades would fill out the class list, the teachers at our campus filled out the class list, we would look to see what teacher would be the best fit for a particular student, and also to make sure that if there were kids who didn't get along, they were separated. If we'd know one class got hit with all the behavior problems. So we were very aware, when our kids came up, we had access to the CUM files. If I saw something off on the first day, I could go down to that CUM file and I could see what's the student's record been, um, for their, you know, entire academic career. Um, so I, I can speak for my campus, I'm sure it's similar at other campuses. Teachers want students to be successful, um, so we wanna.
Find that to be helpful?
Oh, yeah.
For you to have that information?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, I, there was.
Yeah, I mean, did you ever feel like, when you would see that, that you would, like we were saying, like, you know, kind of create an, an idea of what this kid was going to be like, or were, you know?
It, it didn't for me.
Not, or, you know?
It didn't for me, because I raised three boys, and, and two of them were not the best behaved. Um, and so they, you know, so for me, when I saw that show up on my class roster, that was a challenge for me. What can I do to help this student be successful? Um, and, and I think, I, I never really worked with a teacher who didn't want students to be successful.
Well, and you wanna give kids a clean.
And, and I was never afraid to go to administration and say, "Here's what's going on." I mean, I, I never had an experience of being afraid to go to administrator, and I worked with some excellent administrators, so that is my perspective. Um, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Finch, uh, since he is the superintendent, we should probably let him say a few words.
They are our best resource.
Or there's somebody who's in the office for reporting a student, and that child is still in the office when the other kid comes up.
Right.
And then they're looking, going, "Okay, obviously she's the one that just reported me." Because that's happened to my daughter, so.
That's all right, thanks. No, I just wanted to say, thanks for coming. Start there. Um, obviously, it's nice to hear, um, from the streets what's happening, how our system's working or not working. We, we're a big system, and so that's one of the negatives of a big system. It, it gets. We, we're a big system, and so that's one of the negatives of a big system. It, it gets gobbled up by itself. So thanks again for coming. There are some solutions that are obviously easy ones, putting a number in a book, by this time you will do this. That kind of stuff, which we can do. But I'm, what I was looking for and what I heard was more structure. There are pluses and minuses to more structure. I've been in a more structured system, and this one's kind of a little more looser. And I can tell you what's going to happen if we don't go and screw it down tight, where every kid gets this no matter what. What happens in that system is everybody hides behind the book, and they stop using their wisdom. So if a kid touches another kid or slaps them, it's three days, automatic. And there was no wisdom behind it. And so I, I actually like where we are going. As you mentioned, restorative practices, that's the concept where we're bringing everyone together to find a solution, similar to what you were talking about. If we get to a thou shalt system, it's not effective either. I think that the balance is in the middle somewhere is where I'm going. So there are good things that we can tweak to make our system tighter, but I'm very leery of really tighten it down, really super tight, where everything's spelled out to, you know, every single thing. And it ends up taking the wisdom out of it, yeah. But what I want to suggest, and again, I've been, I'm talking to the board as well, I want them to stay out of the weeds, but I want a general philosophy from them, them on where, if they like where the SRNR is going, or they want a different angle on it. And so that's part of the reason why we're having this tonight. So the people that originally wrote the book, well, many years ago, or several years ago as it got updated, that was a committee of parents, and they did the volleyball off to the side, and then got the book ready, and then presented it. So I think that's probably where we need to go into the future, because obviously we aren't going to solve all the problems tonight. But I, I think that's maybe, maybe the, the next step, is to bring that committee back together and run through the book one more time. And it might even be too late by the end of this year to get something done for, you know, massive changes. But there, we have three or four yellow, good suggestions that I agree with, that I think should go forward. But I think from a philosophical system perspective, we actually need to spend more time on this and get different perspectives, because I think we're going to have parents that are going to say, we want a more looser system. And so we need to hear their voices as well. But I want to thank, thank you for coming, and, and it's good stuff. I appreciate every minute that you spent with us. But I think that's probably where we need to head next.
Dr. Finch, I would like to point out that yes, a couple of years ago, it did get completely revamped, but not because a committee wanted to, because board members said this is wrong. And we submitted issues that we saw in it. And it, I, respectfully, I understand that the belief that the board is, could be just silent and condone whatever administration does, but that just doesn't work. We were in that situation, and that's what got us to a lot of problem areas. I, I'm not asking that the board rewrite the, the book itself, but we have to use logic and reason, reason in what we're doing. I'm, I'm looking right here even at, at some of the yellow suggestions. The, the, the one in the first one, electronic devices is, I, I would suggest that we take a class on what FERPA is. Recording is not a FERPA violation. I'm sorry, it's not. And to, to mislead somebody to think it is, I'm not sure why we would add that type of stuff. We have, we, we, this board, this exact board, has faced where we have had, had students come before us, and the question has been asked by, to the administrator, did you understand that that minimum was a suggestion and you could go below it? And the answer was no. They did not understand that. So we have to bring the steps, and, and I'm not saying that it necess, and I'm not saying we have to do it. It may be a committee that does that. But logic and reason has to come into this to where, you know, we have a student who were X, Y, or Z is going to be disciplined. The minimum consequence is this. But we do know that, okay, the, the child has been the victim of bullying. I'll take it to personal, so that we're not going to, I'm not going to step on anybody else's information. When my daughter was disciplined for fighting back against four girls, that should have been considered in whether or not she lost her promotion. She wasn't fighting, she was defending. She could have just put her hands in her pockets, she would have been beat to snot, and she still would have been suspended, and she still would have been, would have lost her promotion. We need to bring adult reason into what we are, are, are. This book can't be a shield to protect us from, from responsibility. Kids are getting victimized and bullied, and then they come to the office and they face a discipline, which they, whether we like it or not, they perceive it as a victim and a bully. And so I, I'm thinking this needs, it may be too late for a full committee this year, but it can't continue. We are losing kids. And my daughter, this was a long time ago, so this hasn't been a change.
So then, Dr. Finch, I think what would be appropriate at this point, and I hope my fellow board members will agree, is to come up with a timeline. Board members can provide input to the committee, the committee can meet, and we can start working on, on changes. It sounds like there's some minor changes there, but I think we need a timeline going forward.
I have a, sorry, can, can, a clarifying question, I guess. Are you, the timeline you're talking about for changes, or for?
For, for a committee to look at this, for board members to provide input. I mean, if we want to make significant changes, that, that's not going to happen tonight, obviously.
No, no, I, I guess I, I just want to make sure. I, I don't, as a board member, want that committee to be a board committee.
I wasn't suggesting that it would be a board committee.
Okay, that was, that was my concern. That was what I was trying to clarify.
No, my thought was this was a committee that board members could submit input to, that would be considered along with parents and other stakeholders.
Ms. Frank, just one more thing, and it, I probably should have said this before you were wrapping it up. But with this new information that you're going to have on this, on the students about the suicide text line, or, or what we talked about particularly for the suicide, or to prevent it, how is it that we're going to impart this information to the students? Because we talk about it ourselves, but I know that all of my history with the kids that would call, they would, I'd tell them to call the hotline, or because they would be a little bit nervous, and that was, you know, social media was there and all that stuff. So how is it, and I know it's difficult, but how is it that you get kids to say, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to tell someone, or I'm not, or, or how are we giving them that message? And I know maybe some of the coaches do that during health, but there's other classes for that, so there you go.
That I do need to get clarification from Miko and Denise and the counselors at each of the high schools. That I don't know how they're going to do that at each campus, but I do believe it needs to be systematic. And everybody needs to be in the know, and it needs to happen, you know, as school is starting. I know that it's a change, so how it is told to students is a big factor in whether or not it works. So I give that.
Mrs. Frank, I could just have one more comment. I, I do want to thank Julie Frank for working with our parents on making some of these changes that I, I think are, while they are seemingly small in the book, are significant changes to our students and their families. So thank you for working closely with all of them, and thank you, parents, for all being here tonight, for staying through the, the last meeting, and coming back and, and working with us. I, I do appreciate your dedication to not just your students, but all of our students.
I wanted to add something too, real quick. Because when students see, not just, because these are the big things, kind of, that we're talking about, you know, the harassment, the bullying, these are big detrimental kind of things. But when students see other things, infractions being looked over consistently, that is an example to the students that the admin does not discipline and that they don't have to follow the rules. For example, Boulder Creek, zero dress code. Zero dress code. There is a dress code, but they don't enforce it at all. My daughter's a Tucker, she tells me everything, and so this is one of the things she tells me. She says, they don't enforce the dress code, so nobody takes anything seriously. So if the adults aren't, are not holding them responsible to the rules, even the smaller rules like dress code, and I, I mean, I don't care about dress code personally, but that's a rule. And if they're not enforcing that rule, why do we have to follow any rules? That's the mentality of the teenagers, right? You know, it's, there's not, there's no consistency. So that's clear, consistent is what it needs to be for these kids, is just clear and consistent.
Okay. And I, I would also like to thank all the parents for showing up a, a second time. And we'll get you out of here earlier tonight, but thank you. You talked about some very difficult things tonight. And I'd also like to thank our student for sharing her experiences. I know that was not easy for you, and I appreciate that. So we have two other meetings tonight. Can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Pass this five oh. Meeting adjourns at 7:20.